For a special meeting of the Los Alamos City Council for Monday, March 15th. It is 5:02 PM. And we have a roll call to start us off.
Mayor Turco?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hasselbrink?
Here.
Councilmember Bates? You're muted, Mr. Bates.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Dobie?
Here.
And Councilmember Napulda?
Here.
All right, special orders of the day. We're going over the general fund budget review for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Craig, I think you're starting us off here, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, if I can, just before we start, just wanted to say that, you know, obviously, this budget was put together during a pretty trying time, a lot of moving parts. And obviously, Craig is going to take us through the nuts and bolts of each one of the various expenditures and revenue lines, but I just wanted to say that my hat is off to the Finance Department and to the Budget Standing Committee for the work that they put in in order to get this budget adopted last year and the rest of the council, you know, falling into that and seeing that the projections that we put out there, that they held water. And I think that what you'll see during the course of this presentation is that the projections and the assumptions that were made continue to hold. So again, I just wanted to commend both the Budget Standing Committee and the Finance Department for the work that they did. With that, Craig, why don't you take us down a stroll down memory lane and let us know where we're ended up?
All right, thank you. I'm gonna share my screen now. Is the PowerPoint showing?
Oh, yeah, Craig.
Here we go. Up now?
Yes.
Okay. To the beginning here. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. We'll be looking at the mid-year budget review tonight for fiscal year 2021 and a projection through June of '21 balance of the fiscal year. And looking for direction and comments in reference to that.
Hey Craig, I think you're on, you're on, you're not on presentation, you're on presentation mode, but it may be showing a different screen. I don't know if that was your intent, but we're seeing the current slide, the next slide, and your notes as well, so.
Well, we don't want to do that.
You may want to share a diff, I don't know if you've got more than one screen. You can share more than one screen or?
Yeah, we have too many screens. Hang on, give me a second. Sorry.
In case your notes say anything insulting about anyone, I thought.
Oh, no, not at all. Not sure how to.
Craig, if you would like, I can go ahead and just share my screen and then you can tell me.
That might be easier because I've got the notes in.
All right. Council, you only see one screen now? No, you're seeing two.
We're seeing your one. We're seeing one now. This is perfect.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Craig.
All right, you want to go to the next slide? Great, so as I mentioned, you're going to be mayor and council and staff. We'll be looking at the mid-year budget for fiscal year 2021 and a projection through the balance of the fiscal year. Looking for direction and comments. Next slide, please. So it's just kind of a little bit of background. As you recall, in June 15th, council adopted a balanced budget and that included significant reductions to close over a $1.3 million budget gap. Also reduced equivalent of 19 full-time positions within that cap closing measures. Following that and most end of last year, November 3rd, the measure Y successfully passed. This has been overshadowed by continuing economic uncertainty, obviously unknown future regarding the future impacts of COVID-19 continue. There's no doubt the economy has suffered, showing signs of recovering although. And two main things are affecting this. Health concerns remain prevalent as we move forward. The introduction of vaccine is helping. Virus's transmission is showing signs of slowing. I understand the city's now advanced into the red tier just over the weekend. With this additional business capacity, consumer spending is also projected to increase. Slide four, please. This budget was adopted, obviously, during the most, what I would coin as perhaps the most financially uncertain time that I could remember. The current budget tracking at mid-year shows a negative 0.3% difference from budget when we factor out measure Y and we would end with projected of about a $28,000 deficit. If this would have occurred, staff would be obviously confident in our ability to offset any amount of the small magnitude before the end of fiscal year 2021. Council obviously really should be commended for their actions in guiding the budget process during these highly uncertain times and still being able to maintain a balanced budget through all this process. Slide five. So the look at the general fund revenues initially, the review includes the amended budget for fiscal year 2021, recorded and actual data through December 31, a projection for where we think the fiscal year will end, June 30th, and we'll look at variance analysis in cities of various revenues and expenditure categories. Thank you. Next slide. So this is a snapshot of the general fund revenues. The first column is the amended budget for fiscal 2021. We had projected $13.6 million with revenues and including transfers in. The actual through December is trending at about 5.2 million. Mid-year projection, projecting at 14.4 million. Overall surplus of about $843,000.
Can we ask some questions, Mr. Mayor, at this point?
Yes, sir.
Yes, of course, and I should have stated that, but it goes without saying. Jump in any moment, as long as Craig's okay with that.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
And, and Mr. Mayor, are we in a public meeting now? Can we be discussing this from a public perspective and then we'll go into closed session later? Is that the thinking?
This is, this is certainly a public meeting. It's been noticed and I believe it's being recorded, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you. So Craig, if we come down under fines and forfeitures, you can see the amount collected there is rather minimal through December 31st. You're projecting a higher figure by the close of the fiscal year. Could you just tell us a little bit more about the things that are included to make that figure, you know, more than double where we are right now?
Well, the fines and forfeitures obviously is really related to the moving violations and red camera fines. And there was a curtailment of street sweeping during the pandemic and that's now been reinstated. So the, we're anticipating that fines from that will be trending up. And it's a little more than 50% based on what remaining activity would be expected from actual data recorded in prior years. That's why we're projecting it a little more than double the collected amount through December 31.
Got it. Under charges for current services, I assume most of that is rec charges. I'm wondering if there's any other things that are included in there that contribute to that significant drop?
No, it's mostly rec programs, classes, and activities. And as you know, all those, most of those classes and activities and programs have been curtailed, postponed, or canceled. And we're anticipating with the classes now coming hopefully back online, that we'll see an increased level of activity and revenue collections.
Got it, but we'll still be down over half a million from earlier projections?
Yeah, that's true, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so a few more questions on this. Next slide. Revenue has continued to largely trend in line with projections and the adopted budget. That said, there are, obviously, we've just seen increases and decreases within different categories. With the introduction of the first quarter, about 25% of measure Y revenue, the city's projected to end the fiscal 2021 year with approximately $843,000 surplus. The largest increases are in property tax and sales tax. And as we'll see, the biggest declines are in fines and forfeitures and charges for services. Next slide. On the, with property tax, the fiscal year 2021 projection is estimated to be about 4.3 million. This is an increase of about $316,000 over the budget. Property net values are changes up 7.2% over the 1920 tax rule. This is per HDL's report. The majority of this change is attributed to the 2% Prop 13 inflation adjustment. Previous to about $38.8 million increase. Residential property grew approximately $64 million or 4.8%. And just note here that it's over 57% of all the city values are in residential properties. Commercial property grew about $21.6 million or 5%. Residence, residential prices continue to rise. There's low inventory of house for sale and interest rates remain low as well. The other change in this category attributed to the vehicle license fee increased about $110,000 over budget. The additional general fund revenue increases are attributed to the sales and use tax core category and also the measure Y local sales tax. Our first sales and use tax projection is estimated at 2.9 million. That's approximately $252,000 over the budget. This is reflection of latest update from HDO, which received last month. The economy is showing moderate recovery, but it's to be noted here that we're still down 5.2% from fiscal year 1920. Non-essential retail restrictions and reduced consumer spending are still in play. This is offset by growth in e-commerce sales. That is, that category is up tremendously and there's been a move away from the traditional brick and mortar. However, the recovery is not expected till fiscal year 2122. This again is a prediction or report from HDL.
Craig, sorry, real quick, before you move on to measure Y. So the sales and use tax, we're up above where we thought we would be? Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, but, but we're down from 1920? Is that, is that also correct?
Yeah, yes. So overall, we're actually less than where we were in 1920, but we're above where we budgeted of fee after 2021.
So is that, is that, I guess that's maybe because we amended the budget and significantly cut our projections for sales tax? I mentioned our, and I don't expect you to remember this offhand, but is it true that we, you know, in, well, I guess we would have, we would have known about the pandemic at the time we adopted our initial budget, right?
Yeah, that's correct. So I think, yeah, I think the estimate we used was the best we had at the time. Obviously, there's been some improvement in the economy, which is a reflection of the $253,000 now increase over budget. However, when compared back to the fiscal year 1920, we're about 5% less than the prior fiscal year.
Hey Craig?
Yes?
Could the increase be because of the Wayfair law being implemented in California? So we're seeing some of those shipped to out-of-state sales tax dollars?
I think that's part of it. The e-commerce has really been the driving force, I think, overall too, as well. You don't see the traditional sales coming from the shops, but we're seeing an increase in the e-commerce and the Wayfair revenue streams coming to the city.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, as I would think I was referencing the measure Y local sales tax, that's going to add an additional 1.5% from local sales. Expected to generate over $4 million annually for the city. The city will receive approximately 25% of this funding in the current fiscal year by June of 2021. Next slide. For the general fund decreases mainly in fines and forfeitures and charges for current services, as we had discussed earlier, fines and forfeitures are down approximately $369,000. This is strictly lower due to lower parking violations and red camera fines trending lower due to COVID-19. Charges for current services are down approximately $548,000 or projected to be down $548,000 for fiscal year 2021. The majority of the revenue related is to recreation programs. However, it's expected to show some increase as the stay orders are lifted and classes is a ultimately resume. Thank you. Next slide.
Well, I have a question about the red camera fines?
Yes.
And this is because I know really nothing except for what I see people fussing about on Nextdoor. But are we going to continue with those? Some people say that they are not, like, we're supposed to move away from them. Some cities don't do them at all. Are, are we just, we red camera, because I don't even ever see them go off. Is that we're going to keep the red camera fines?
So, Councilmember, if I can take that one. We, there was a big onslaught of moving towards red light cameras. This was in the, I'll call it the early 90s, and then a lot of cities moved away from them, primarily because there was an argument made about them causing rear-end collisions. And I think that there was a very quick move to move away from them. That being said, we have taken the time and have operated this system for a long period of time, and we do believe that it actually does slow down traffic, given the fact that we have such a highly traveled intersection there that also has children crossing and such. And just in terms of if they do work, I can say, the first time I drove into the city, I actually got a ticket. So it does work and people are paying it, so there is value to it. And I think from just a safety standpoint, the visual of having those cameras on the street does, I know it slows me down now, so it does work.
Well, do we have like an announcement or something? Because we did like an announcement with reinstating the street sweepers? If we could just let folk know, like, our red light camera is in full effect and y'all get caught, the bill gonna come. Don't go to Nextdoor, offer to fight it. You gonna pay that money?
I don't think we ever stopped it. I think there were just less people on the road traveling.
It, it was that there was less people on the road traveling and then also we had some staff that were, are in charge of actually running the program. They're a person who it ends and just given the, I'll call it the operational necessity to keep certain things running and certain things, people in the building. When the pandemic first started, they were some of the people that we had working remotely and realized that that was not a service that we could continue to provide remotely. And so for a time, it slowed down, but it never stopped, I guess, is the best way to put it.
Well, I would look for it to go off, just being perfectly frank, because I would see people blow through it and it was like, oh, I guess we don't take pictures anymore.
Pete, Chief, I think you've got, I, maybe you can address this, Chief. I do recall hearing from either you or, or one of the captains a while back. You know, we actually have data to support the, the fact that this, these red light cameras have decreased the number of accidents that take place at that intersection. But I'll let you chime in here, Chief.
I was gonna say to, thank you, Mayor, but Councilmember Dobie, they, we never did stop the program. Would it happen a couple of things? And the city manager was right that part of it was because of the COVID situation. We were, our two reserve police officers that are the, that's their primary function is a red light camera at the police department, they were no longer allowed to be in the building for health concerns, obviously. And then there was also the fact that the court themselves closed for a great period of time. So there weren't, they weren't even listening to cases and then they expire after so long. So a lot of those folks that we would have cited and didn't get cited either because we didn't have the personnel to review each case or, and/or because the court wouldn't have accepted those cases because they weren't open and operating. But we've, it's about, I think when they first came in, there was a reduction of about 29% accidents in the, in the intersection of Los Alamos and Cotella, which is pretty significant because running red lights is obviously one of the most dangerous and causes some of the most dangerous injury accidents because of the fact that both parties are going at speed or one is going at speed and the other one is entering and getting hit on the side.
To be clear, I'm not saying do away with the red light camera. I'm just saying, maybe give it, like, we gave notice that street sweeping was in effect again. Because I've seen, there was one guy, a child, he was looking for an attorney and everything else, talking about, this ain't fair. So maybe we do like a little rollout, like, hey, everything is back on the table, so just be aware of what you're doing at that intersection. Is my, my thought.
Check, could we do, could we do like a reminder on Nextdoor that says, you know, as a reminder, your street sweeping is in effect and, and, you know, something to say, you know, safety is our utmost, of utmost importance to the city. As a reminder, the intersection of Los Alamos Boulevard and Cotella has red light cameras. Ensure you're traveling at a safe speed so that you can stop in time, you know, stay safe and avoid a ticket, something like that?
It's an excellent idea. I think PSAs are definitely the way to go on this one. So that is not a problem at all. We definitely do that.
Very good.
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we go to the next slide. On general fund expenditures, the department expenditures overall are trending as projected. The city's been able to realize additional savings in some different areas of the city's operations. Most notably, this is in the police, development services, and recreation. Next slide. Here's a snapshot of the general fund expenditures and projection for fiscal year 2021. Amended budget, we were at total expenditures and transfers out of about $13.6 million. Expenditures through December 31, about 50% of that at $7 million. Mid-year projection, we're projecting expenditures would be about $13.4 million or about $239,000 overall less than budget. Next slide. As I mentioned, the expenditures changes for fiscal 2021, $239,000 overall decrease or, or in this case, savings projected in expenditures. Notably, in police department, about $183,000 for overall expenditures. This is in materials, supplies, and services. Same thing holds for development services, about $26,000 lower than budget. And then in recreation, it's projected at approximately $30,000 less expenditures relating to mainly playgrounds and special event programs. Next slide. There's additional stimulus funding that's now in play. The federal stimulus package has been approved by both houses and now signed by the president. This equates to dedicated funding for state and local governments. Over $130 billion through modified CDBG formula. The blind share of this, approximately $45.5 billion, will go to entitlement communities that are greater than $50,000 or $50,000 in population. Approximately $19.5 billion will be distributed to non-entitlement communities, less than $50,000 population. The city of Los Alamos is anticipated to receive approximately $2.1 million of this new stimulus package. However, there's still details to be worked out by the Treasury Department that may impact how these funds can be administered. Next slide. So in review, the fiscal 21, 2021 mid-year budget review, some couple of important key takeaways. The significant cuts in cost reduction measures that were enacted during the last budget process in order to achieve a balanced budget are obviously holding. And then with the introduction of the new revenue resulting from the passage of measure Y, the city is now expected into the year with a surplus of approximately $843,000. Next slide.
Hey Craig, can you go back a couple, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Maybe to, I think it was 13? Go back one more? Okay, so here, here it says revenue over expenditures, we're gonna have 1.081? Is that right? 1.081 million?
Well, that, that, yeah, overall, we'll have 1.1 million in revenue over expenditures.
Okay, and is that, that's before we factor in measure Y or does that include measure Y?
That includes measure Y.
Okay. And measure Y, we were anticipating approximately 1?
1.1.
1.1, okay.
So it's almost, it's almost equivalent of measure Y.
Okay, and what's the difference between this number 1.081 and the 883 you have on slide 14?
843 is just the difference in the revenues. When you factor in the savings, potential savings for the expenditures, then you add another $239,000 to that, brings you to the 1.1 million.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
And.
Craig, can I get, could, would you mind explaining that one more time? How did you get from the 800,000 to the 1.1?
Okay, so we kind of put this in two parts. Looked at revenues first. The projected revenue savings, or projected revenue increase actual over budget is 843,000. On the expenditure side, there's some potential savings here because of the expenses are projected to be less than budget. And if you factor in the 239 plus the 843, that brings to approximately 1.1 million revenues over expenditures projected for 2021.
Okay. Okay. So, so without measure Y, we'd be, we'd be in the red or we'd be behind our amended budget by 300,000? Is that, is that about right?
You, when I looked at it, took out measure Y, factor measure Y, we'd have a deficit of approximately 30,000. It would be really close to what we had projected.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm following the math there. So I'm looking, I'm looking at the initial, the revenue chart, Craig?
Yes.
And this is on our, this is on the agenda, page, page two of, of the report, page four of the PDF. So if we take out the 1.1 million on measure Y, right?
Right.
It would be, our revenues would be?
13.3, yeah. It'd be about 13.3, but then if you add the savings from the expenditures, you'd be just about scratch, about back to zero or the actual math is about $30,000 deficit.
Okay, understood, but, but here, and just in terms of revenues, if not for measure Y, we would be?
Just about at budget.
We'd be about a budget. No, we'd be?
Well, you'd be 300,000, about 300,000.
We'd be 300,000 short.
Yeah, so 300,000 was the potential savings on the expenditure size, which is just about at projected budget, which was.
Okay, did our amended budget, sorry, our amended budget did not incorporate measure Y, right, Craig?
No, no, the amended, we called it a. No, no, the amended, we called it amended because we came back in October to add the additional funding from uh the coronavirus um that was not included with the original budget. We did not change the general fund revenues or expenses, but we had to call it amended.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So with that, uh, staff recommendations then is to receive and file the mid-year general fund budget for fiscal year 2021, uh, the projection for June 30th, 2021, and provide direction comments. Then I would ask for any additional questions.
Anybody, anybody have any questions? I know Mayor Protzen, Hasselbrink and I uh participated in the budget standing committee meeting last week. So I think we got most of our questions uh answered at that time. But uh, does anyone else have any questions for Craig or Chad? All right, what's uh, what is the next, uh, what's the next update for the council on the budget? Uh, Chad or Craig?
So our plan is to actually come back to the uh, now that we have completed the mid-year process, we go full speed right into plan preparing for next year's budget. So what our plan is, is that we will be bringing a projected budget for this coming year to the city council, which will include, or I'm sorry, to the budget standing committee. Uh, that will include revenues that were generated through uh the passage of measure Y. It will also include potentially the funding um that was referred to with regards to the federal stimulus package. Uh, depending on when exactly that money will arrive here, uh, there's some debate as to when exactly that will happen. It's gonna be largely contingent upon when exactly the Treasury Department releases its guidance um and shows everybody how exactly the funding can be spent. Uh, we anticipate doing that at the beginning of April. Uh, then we will be back to this, the entire city council to do the same, uh, to give the same presentation. Um, at that point, we will be working in all of the different um expenditure requests from the various departments and then also working on a number of the CIP projects that um are not currently showcased in this budget. Uh, as the council remembers, we forego or forewent a number of CIP projects during this last budget cycle because of the uncertainty in the economy and wanting to ensure that we had cash on hand in the event that we needed to use it in order to battle the pandemic. Um, once all of that is brought together, then we will progress into um two or three more budget study sessions and targeting an adoption in the month of June.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, Chad, can you help us on, based on what we're reading on the federal stimulus? Do you anticipate that the entire 2.1 will be included in the 2122 fiscal year? Or will some of it go into 2223?
It's a, it's an excellent question. Um, I'll anticipate, well, the tranche of money, the 2.1 is cut up into two separate payments. The first one is supposed to be remitted to the cities within 60 days. And then the second payment is supposed to be one year after that. So it will, there will be a million dollars of it that will be planned for in the following year's budget. Um, and then this year's budget will just be the uh, the one point, uh, I'm sorry, the 1.5 that uh we should receive in that first payment. So it is split over two years.
Got it, but if we're going 2122, wouldn't, oh, I see. Because you're saying the first portion will be in this year, this fiscal year. Then the second portion will be in the next fiscal year with any carryover from this fiscal year.
Exactly, it's, and well, I I with this caveat, sir, uh, just when exactly uh the federal government decides to send us the money, then we'll be able to account for it. But I believe, and maybe Craig can speak to this a little bit more if needed, but even if we were to receive that funding after July 1, I believe that due to accounting principles, there's a way to account for that revenue within that year. But again, Craig is the expert and the the CPA in the room.
Uh, that is correct. So any any revenues expenditures uh that are captured after the year through August 31st would be applicable to uh current fiscal year.
Very good. Uh, any more questions? Otherwise, I I believe we are uh just uh receive and file on this one. And we're going into closed session if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, so moved.
Uh, Mayor, would you like me to read the council into closed session?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss item 4A as listed on tonight's agenda.
Um, Mr. Mayor, do do we take action to receive and file? Don't we need an official vote to receive and file or?
That, we don't need an official vote on on that recommendation.
Okay.